Okay, welcome, 7:00 PM. And it's good to have everyone here tonight. Called order, I think we have everyone here, present. So let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or deletions and adoptions to the agenda tonight? Are we okay with as it is? Looks like it is. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as stated?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. Conflict of interest statement. In accordance to state law, it is the duty of every council member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any council member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters on the agenda? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the matter involved. Okay, no conflicts, we're all good there. Mayor and council member reports, you want to go first? Jeff, you always jump in there.
I'll go ahead and jump in. Just a heads up for everybody, the next meeting for the Western Union Municipal Alliance will be February the 27th on Thursday at 4:00 in Wesley Chapel. But what I do want to draw attention to is that, as I mentioned to a couple of the council members before the meeting, I'd got confirmation earlier this week. And the March meeting for Wuma will be at Marvin on March the 27th at 7:00 PM. And we're going to have the county manager, Brian Williams, Union County Manager there, to give us an update on what's going on in the county, budget-wise, project-wise, infrastructure-wise, et cetera. And I got confirmation from Senator Todd Johnson, from Representative David Willis, who is our particular representative for here in Weddington, and also Representative Dean Arp. Part of, over half of our legislative delegation will be there. And I highly encourage anybody that's listening or anybody here in the room, if you've got any questions about the legislation and these things, and you're going to hear about a couple of them here later on in our meeting, now is your time, or that would be your time, to be there, to ask them directly, because they are representing us up in Raleigh. And I hope it will be well-attended. And I will add one more thing, if you have a question, let's say you can't make it, but you have a question that you would like addressed, if you will put that in writing and get it to Karen Dewey, to our town administrator, she can not only distribute it to me, but she can distribute it to the other members of the Wuma group. And so we can let them, or we can have agenda items or specific questions ready if you've got a specific concern and you can't be there to ask it yourself.
What time?
7:00, the one on March 27th is at 7:00 PM. And it'll be at the Marvin Town Hall. The one this month is at the normal meeting time, which is 4:00 in the afternoon. And it'll be in Wesley Chapel, at their town hall at 4:00 PM on February 27th.
And I want to say thank you for putting this together. You've heard expressions, was it show up and speak up? If any of these, you know, if you haven't been to one, I would say come to this March one, because there's things going on in Raleigh that affects us tremendously in a negative way. And so there's going to be a point to where I think, you know, as a town, we're going to reach out and say, hey, guys, we need some, we need some help from you guys to put some pressure on those guys to maybe not do some things they're doing. So I think it's a good time for the town to get involved and show up and get to know these guys. So I want to say again, thank you, Jeff, for putting this together. This is one of our important ones. So just, you know, spread the word, social media, that kind of thing. Anybody, anyone else? Nothing?
All I have is I'm still waiting on the paving schedule for the town roads, what's going to get paved this year, but hopefully we'll have that soon.
Okay. You guys good?
I have none.
Okay. Public comments, Debbie, do we have anybody signed up? No for general, okay, all right, we'll move forward. Public safety report, come on up. Deputy Rinn?
Mayor, council, thank you, as always. An extreme pleasure to be in front of you today. Citizens, once again, thank you so much, as always. Before we get started on some numbers, I just want to kind of go over two little things. We were able to get our two newest deputies out of training, currently working the road. Deputy William, Will Goleb, came from us from Albemarle. He has multiple years of experience. We decided to pick him out because not only did he have small-town experience, but he had leadership potential that we know is going to be beneficial for the town of Weddington. He's already started, been here for over a week. He's been the day shift deputy here for a little bit, so he's done fantastic for so far. Your night shift deputy to help Will while he's on day shift is Ian Barclay. Ian also comes from Stanley County, but he started in Stanfield, North Carolina. Ian is a prior Marine, so he's very squared away. We've had a lot of really good contact with him. He's had a lot of good cases in training, so he was able to use that training to come over to Weddington. We also picked Ian out because not only does he have leadership potential, but he's great with small towns, worked in small towns, knows how to really deal with the community very well. Both deputies are going to have a different background. One is traffic-oriented, one is fantastic in background investigation. So we really want to be able to utilize them for the best tools of their ability and their training. Want to be able to tap their resources. You're going to see some new faces coming in and out. We have another one, he's going to be transferring from the town of Marvin. So as soon as he comes over, I'll be more than happy to announce him whenever he gets here. All the updated information as far as contact information and things of that nature should be on the town's website. We love Q&amp;A sessions, but a lot of times we get busy, so we'll hold it to the end. Go over some numbers really quick. Now, one hangups tend to change a little bit. Everybody's getting used to the new Apple phones and Apple watches for Christmas, so we dropped from 51 to 46. Accidents had a pretty serious reduction, that is to include serious vehicle wrecks, from 26 to 14. Alarm calls tend to make a pretty big difference, whether it's people coming home from vacations, Christmas extravaganzas, from 55 to 34. Business checks did go up from the 20s to 31. We still want to go out there and check our businesses for multiple different reasons. Preventive patrols did take a pretty big spike. Now that we have a little bit more time to get away from the holidays, we want to be in your neighborhoods a lot more. So we went from 573 to 657. Anytime that we come into a neighborhood, we want to try to document multiple different things. When and where we're coming out, what we're coming out. So if ever you have a question, I've never seen a deputy in my neighborhood. We're able to pull that information 657 times in a month. Hopefully those odds, we were in your neighborhood. Suspicious vehicles did take an increase from 13 to 15. I say that's a good thing, because we want you calling in. We want to let you know, hey, that construction worker's not supposed to be here at 9, 10 o'clock at night, things of that nature. So the spike there, in my opinion, professional and personal, is going to be a good thing. I want to hear about what you don't know in your area. I want to hear about, I don't like that person over there, or I've never seen that person on the walking trail, things of that nature. So we did take an increase from there. Traffic stops, last month we're at 110, we increased it to 115. We're not looking to cause any people a bunch of heartache and things of that nature, but we knew they'd be getting out there, cutting on those lights. So we went from 110 to 115. Total calls for the month was 1,090, things of that nature. Go talk to your HOAs. Get out there, let us know how we can help you. We've increased foot patrols, nature paths, walking paths. Things are getting to be a lot more beautiful, so people are getting out of the houses. Weather's getting very nice, but that does increase maybe other people. So we want to be able to increase that, too. So we're getting out on foot, getting out of our cars and stretching our legs with you. If you want us to walk your dogs with you, we'd be more than happy to. We enjoy getting out in the communities to know multiple different things. Where's your egress and entry points of your neighborhoods? Did you change something up? Beautiful new construction to a nature walk? So let's get out there and we'll walk it with you. We've stepped out in the neighborhoods a lot more here lately. That also being said, spoken, we were able to really step up our saturation patrol. Saturation is when we can flood your entire community with a lot of blue lights and hopefully cause a little bit of difference within traffic. So our last saturation, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about it at the last meeting, but I'll reiterate, it was over 70 vehicles stopped, over 80 citations, multiple vehicles towed for no insurance. We're pushing that really big, Sheriff Kathy's big on it, and we want to enforce it as much as possible. So if there's any other areas, radar trailer was just moved. If there's anything in your area that you want us to target, focus on, please reach out to either myself or the other deputies, to include the new ones. Let's get out in your area and we'll see what we can do. Thank you once again so much, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Rinn, quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
At one point you guys had, I think you may have not had a couple gate codes to get into some gated communities. Are you guys okay with that? Is that anything we need to help you guys with? Are you guys good with all the codes that you need?
Given where credit needs to be due, Ms. Dewey has reached out to all the HOAs. Not only reached out, but she was able to get us that contact extremely fast. So working great with Wesley Chapel Fire Department, we're able to get all that information distributed out to our communication center. They're able to get it to our MCTs, our mobile computer data signals. So if we come into your residential area and we don't know the gate code or anything of that nature, we do have multiple ways to get in. A couple neighborhoods that we had some questions on, some of the issues was a brand-new gate. This one got damaged, so we wanted to change it up. The codes are going to change, things of that nature. Ms. Dewey has been fantastic to be in the point of contact for that. So she's reached out to not only HOAs, but just people in the community. That information is not pushed out. If you have a contractor code, things of that nature, we don't get the contractor code. We have a certain code that we use with our emergency communication center, and that center only sends it to us. So I know that's been a little bit of confusion. Hopefully I cleared that up.
I know you guys hit the scale offense here recently, and so don't need to be doing that, I guess.
We need to get out and stretch, so we're doing some physical exercise, so I'm not going to complain about that.
And by the way, tell, if you could relate to our new deputies, just tell them welcome that on behalf of the council, the staff, the town, that we're excited they're here. And tell them welcome if there's anything we can do for you guys and for them, you know, give us a call.
Oh, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you. The consent agenda, there's four items. The approval of the January's council meeting minutes. Also to authorize the tax collector to advertise the unpaid real estate taxes, so. The approval of the 2026 urban archery seasonal renewal. And the regular minutes to the, or well, approval of the retreat date and time at Rolling Hills Country Club. Can I get a motion to approve the consent?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. No old business, we'll move on to new business. Discussion of the Resolution 2025-01 in support of HB 24, repeal of the downzoning section of SB 382.
I didn't understand that.
Oh, sorry. Put this back here. Siri's already listening, I guess. As a lot of you guys may know, last month, December 11th, I believe it was, the General Assembly approved and passed a bill. It was really, it was a good, it was a good bill, it was with support of the Western North Carolina disaster and the money needed there, but got snuck in was a bill that regulated downzoning and negatively affected really all the towns across the state. I don't know if anybody's even taken responsibility for it. A lot of people spoke and said, we don't know how it got in there, but last minute was, got in and it was approved with that bill for funding for Western North Carolina. So we're doing, as a town, as a, I say as a town, as a council, a staff, we're doing a resolution in support of the repeal of that bill. And that repeal is House Bill 24. So, and I know other municipalities are doing the same thing as we are, trying to get that repealed, at least that part of that bill, not the money for Western North Carolina by no means, but that portion of the bill. So I'm going to open it for the council to comment on this, but we're going to take a vote on it, too. So anyone want to comment on this, on what has happened?
Well, I mean, I'll just start off, I mean, anybody that's been attending these sessions for the last couple of years, you've certainly heard some of the bills that have been proposed going through the state legislature to reduce, to eliminate, to water down local towns zoning authorities. And this is just another example of that. And I'm certainly in favor of repealing it. They're trying to do too much. And as I mentioned earlier in comments, this is exactly the kind of thing that I know I'm going to be asking about at that March 27th meeting to our folks from the legislative delegation. And I would hope some of y'all would, too, to ask them to fight against this kind of stuff, because, you know, you don't want the folks in Raleigh taking away Weddington, or Wesley Chapels, or Marvin's, or Stallings, or anybody's local council, local elected officials' ability to control their zoning. And that's what I've got with it.
Anyone else want to comment?
I'm of the same mindset. It's just been one of many things that's decreed. And most of them seem to get in and nobody seems to understand how they got in. And nobody claims responsibility for them, but they all get passed, because the big part of it is what we all have to do, like in this case, funding for the mountains. And it's happened a number of times, and this is just one more example.
No, you're right. Brandon or Darcy, any comments on this?
Very specifically on behalf of the town of Weddington, we want to control our zoning, so.
Right. No, you're right. And one thing it affects is, now guys, correct me if I'm wrong in this, as we stand as, you know, one acre, a one-acre town, if we decide to do zoning and say, hey, we want to do three-acre, four-acre, we can't do that anymore. We, basically, we can go down, we can do high-density, we can put, you know, 14 houses on one lot, exaggerating, but we just can't expand it. So they handcuffed us. And so that's what us and other municipalities are fighting against, that we need to be, as Brandon said, to be able to control our own zoning.
Well, the best example to get, Mayor, is like last year when we upped the minimum lot size and average size for subdevelopments here in town. If we hadn't done that before this legislation got approved, we couldn't do it.
Right.
So that's why it's important to let the state legislature people know how we feel about it.
No, our timing was good last year, but these are the type of things, like Jeff was saying, that, you know, we need the community support, too. We can say what we're, you know, want to say to them and put a little pressure on them, but I think, you know, more community pressure on these guys in some of these things as, like this, is needed. So.
I want to say one thing to this. And our legislators that we have here are in what you call very safe districts. And when the top men at the legislature say, you need to do this, they don't feel the pressure from the people not to do it. They go along because leadership says you have to do this.
You're right. And I'm just going to say it this way, we, as a town, we as a community, need to start putting more pressure. And we need to start being more vocal about this. Because when the residents come to us and say, you know, can't you do this, can't you do that? And we say, no, we can't. Why can't you? Well, because we didn't put the pressure on it and stop it up there. So we need to have a little bit more control down here and put the pressure on it.
So it sounds to me like we're ready to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-01 in support of House Bill 24 repeal of downzoning section of SB 382?
House Bill 24?
Support of.
Support of House Bill 24.
Yes.
And repeal of.
Right, I think you said it. So can I get a, so we have a motion for in support of House Bill 24 and repeal of the other one. Can I, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll move forward. Next on the, on the agenda is, okay. Okay. Thank you. We're hearing application for Keystone Homes for conditional zoning approval for development of 12-lot subdivision on Deal Road, parcel number 06099010. I'm going to have you guys to come on up and give us your presentation. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. Thank you for having us. It's been a long time coming, we had to postpone this a couple of times. A lot of it had to do with the septic, we were just trying to get our permits in hand. So you will notice on our application, we actually reduced the lots from 12 to 11 to comply with the buffer rule, so we actually had to lose a lot in order to get that.
Thank you.
Compliance, yep. Other than that, there's really no other changes to the design from the planning board other than just losing that one lot.
Okay, so you're a 100-foot buffer?
Yep, 100 buffer on both sides. We decided that that lot, the remaining area, is just going to be common open space.
Okay.
Last time I know that I asked about a sidewalk, because it is right beside the middle school and it's likely there will be kids that live in that neighborhood.
Right.
And there wasn't a place for a sidewalk, or you weren't intending to put one in, but can, is there at least a cut-through so those kids aren't walking on the Deal Road? Like, can there, can there be, there need, I would like to see there be at least a path from the middle school. Otherwise, they're going to be, and here saying the same thing that they do about the high school, there's no sidewalks and those kids are walking on the highway.
Right.
Deal Road is as crazy as 84.
Yeah, no, I've seen it, I know.
During school hours, so is there any way?
I don't think we have an objection to that. We'd have to see where specifically to put it, and we would have to put an easement between some lots of some sort. I think I'd like to coordinate that with the school as well.
That would be amazing, and everything else, we, you know, I appreciate you guys working with us and making the changes that you have, and that would be the one ask I have.
Sure.
Anyone else, I have a couple of questions, but anyone's having any questions? Now, you ended up getting municipal water, right, county water?
Yes, well, we haven't applied for it yet. We're in the preliminary stages. We know where we're going to get it from, which is in front of the school. We have to extend it along the right-of-way and then bring it into the property.
Got you, okay. And you ended up with a panel block septic?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I do have a question. And this is just a minor question.
Sure.
Vertical versus horizontal, what's the difference in that? And what do you plan to do here?
Yes, sir, so they're all panel block systems.
Well, yeah, it's just, I know there's vertical versus horizontal.
Yes, sir, it's just a different application. So in order to use vertical panels, you typically need about 42 inches of soil, which is pretty deep. So the makers of panel block decided that they wanted to be able to access other sites in shallower soils, so they came up with what's called a horizontal panel, where you could use it in as little as 27 inches of soil. And that's, that's really, it's the same product, it's just turned on its side, it's treated the same way.
Got you, and it's just really different soil types?
Yes.
Okay, and that's just a minor question, reading your information earlier.
Sure.
Okay.
And all the lots now have permits, right?
Every one except for lot one, that one went in a little later. We anticipate getting that one this week. But it's, they're all the same.
Okay, and all of them panelists, except for that one that you know of?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other, when I was reading through, going through the packet, the old information was mixed in with the new information, so it took me a little bit to figure out, you know, that that house that was taken out for the buffer was still in there. I'm like, okay, what's going on here?
Got you.
And so it wasn't until Sketch Plan 101 that I realized, oh, here's the update. And so that, you know, solved that problem.
I will say, they listened to the community and to council on the preliminary plan to where you've gotten to now, which I give y'all credit for.
Thank you, yeah. We want to be good stewards in this community and we want to be proud of it, so. And we want the community to be proud of it.
I have some other questions, but those were answered earlier in the evening. And. Is there anything you'd like to add to as far as your home design? Or is anything changed with your product that you're going to put in there?
No, not necessarily. Again, we are a custom home builder, so we don't build spec homes. These will all be individually selected by the client.
What is the estimated price range going to be now? Because I know from when you start to where you now, prices have gone up.
They have gone up, yeah, we're looking at about 1.3 plus.
Okay. I was down there yesterday just looking at the site again, and I noticed it's really like a pine forest.
Yes.
And so I know we're doing tree ordinance tonight, but that shouldn't affect you, because everything I saw in there was just all these scraggly pine trees.
Well, and I think that was my intent, too, with the walking path, because I think a lot of kids use that land right now.
Yeah.
To get to the neighborhoods further, so.
Presspassing.
Well, what people probably don't want is trespassing, but what we don't want even more is an injured kid hit.
Of course, understood.
So hopefully, like, I really am hoping something can be done to get those kids to the other side of that neighborhood.
We'll work with the school and with Greg on that, so, yeah.
Got you. Now, you're not doing a gated entrance?
No, we are not.
Okay. And you don't have any plans for that in the future? And I think from your layout, you said you couldn't really do it.
We can't fit it, yeah, you'd need more depth.
Okay. And I noticed some residents, too, had a question about driveways lining up and that kind of thing.
Yeah, we initially offset that so that there's no direct correlation.
Okay, so I did get taken care of, okay. You're right.
I'll just say about the sidewalk or pathway through, we talked about this before, but kids use that property to get to the opposite side of the property. So if that does come to fruition, it's not just a pathway from the school into the property, but a pathway from the school that could lead through the.
Correct.
Property, or, you know, even down the outside of the property, because they are going to a neighborhood on the opposite side of 12 Mile Creek.
I'd have to look at that. I think the surrounding properties are all individually owned. I don't think there's any common open space or anything that they can actually travel through unless they're going through someone's property.
No, they probably are.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm not sure if we would, from a liability perspective, try to connect to someone else's property, yeah.
It's one thing taking care of your neighborhood, it's hard to.
No, but if they could do something where the kids would go on the outskirts of that neighborhood to get to the other one.
Put a sidewalk down the entire length of that, their parcel, which would be safe.
At least a walking path, anything.
And you got, and there's a 100-foot buffer there, so there's room for it.
Correct.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it would lead to nowhere, because there are like four or five properties between the end of that property, the end of this proposed property and 12 Mile Creek.
Yeah, but it would lead to the school, and their ability to do anything off their property is limited, so you can only do what you can do on what you're developing. Yeah, it leads to nowhere, but it gets it beyond their property to where people.
And someone else can take the negative, you know, hopefully.
Well, let me ask you this, is this a, you know, a request or a condition you guys would like to follow through with?
If you don't do it now, you don't know what happens.
I want there to be some sort of path so kids aren't on Deal Road walking.
Okay. So, do you have the map of that? Can you throw that back up? Great. So you would extend it from, from really, from where this, really the ball field is up there, just down to the other side, past their parcel? So what you're talking about?
That's not a ball field, that's the retention pond.
Well, no, 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 I'm talking about the ball field, there is a ball field up there, the tree line.
Everything on the bottom is a ball field.
Right, correct. So.
A recreation field or whatever.
Oh, yeah, the Union County Board of Education, yeah, that's the baseball field there.
So is that what you guys are talking about, either a walking path or a sidewalk?
I don't, I thought they were going to work with what makes sense.
For the school.
Greg, you want to?
Yeah, we've already gone through staff recommendations and the planning board. You can do whatever you wish in terms of conditions.
Right.
Yeah, so the condition you could add is that, let me try to, so the minutes come out correctly. The applicant will work. The applicant will work with staff and Union County schools to create a walking path from school edge of property to the far edge of, and there's going to be better words than that, of your property, so that students can traverse from all the way across. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so what we're looking at is, is develop, the applicant, staff and the school will work to find a path from the school across and through the property.
Now, you're not cutting through the property, you're just going down the front, front.
So, well, if, if that works, whatever, and again, that's why they all will work together to find out, maybe there's an easy way through the back, you know, who knows, but.
You could go with the cul-de-sac down, maybe the simplest thing, I don't know.
Exactly. And that's what, whatever they can, but, but that's why we would leave it to them to figure out the best.
And really, with this, all they can really, we can even talk them about is getting the kids of their neighborhood to the school.
Yes, right. Because there's a whole group of them, like Brandon said, that go beyond that, and that would be up to the next neighborhood and the next neighborhood, but at least.
This is, all we can control here is what they do for their.
And so, yeah, no, no offsite improvement, we, we're not asking them for that, we're asking for a path.
Beyond the neighborhood towards 12 Mile are all individually owned, single-family properties, and I have some hesitancy about putting in a pathway from the school to the opposite end of the property on the 12 Mile side, because all those people are going to say that the town put in a sidewalk that invited children to walk on, individuals, not just children, to walk onto our property.
Yeah, did that make, to the cul-de-sac would make the most sense if that would be okay with them.
But if you do the cul, if you do the cul-de-sac of their property, then you're encouraging people to come in and park in, in the, in the neighborhood, correct?
No.
It was middle school, not high school.
And it's a path.
It's all the same campus. They will park there and they will walk to the school.
They will, they will.
Oh, they will.
They will.
Yes, they will.
Yeah, they will.
They'll park in my neighborhood and walk to the school.
And they're already, they're already doing it, because we talked to all the residents.
This is a walking path, not a driving path.
But what I'm saying is, if you, if you do a, a path inside the neighborhood, then you're saying, come on in and take the path.
If you build it, they will come.
Yes.
I guess I don't understand what a walking path is.
Well, they will, there aren't, there aren't enough parking spaces in the high school.
I, I know that.
So kids find places, like, they will park in this neighborhood and then walk from this neighborhood to the high school.
Right.
They're park, they're parking in the neighborhood across the street already.
Yeah, there's, there's neighborhoods across who are renting out parking spaces in their, in their driveways for kids.
I know. I have two high schoolers.
So that, so this would be even more inviting to them.
Maybe.
So I would want to incur more of a problem inside their neighborhood by, by encouraging.
And I don't know how we could restrict parking on a public road.
I just don't want kids to get hit on Deal Road. Whatever has to happen for that, that's, that's my only request. I don't think any of us want that.
I mean, I don't, I can't predict the future, but I do see a space where if we put, we say you need a sidewalk and they build a sidewalk and then students are parking and walking, then people are going to come to us and want a parking ordinance, which we can discuss that too, but I just, it's a domino effect.
Well, if you just built a sidewalk from the entrance down, not the whole way of the property, just down to the school, it seems to me you've provided a safe walkway for the children of the community to get down. And you can't control everything that happens, but it seems to me that having a safe pedestrian way to the school from the neighborhood, not saying it goes all the way up to the north end of the property, but just from the entrance south.
Yep.
May, to me would be reasonable.
I think that.
And you don't cut through the back.
Right, it's not unreasonable for that.
Parkway in there, then cut through, which they may do anyway, but that's private homeowners. Most times they'll, they'll seek out path of least resistance, and I get it. Putting the sidewalk at the front makes the most sense, but if it's going to save me five minutes walking time, they'll, the picture that you just showed where that cul-de-sac ends, and they can go right in between two yards unless it's fenced up. Somebody puts something, they. Unless they put a fence up, they're going to use it. That's a problem.
Right.
Can an HOA pass the parking ordinance for their own community?
Yes.
Yep.
Are y'all going to have an HOA?
Yes, we will.
There we go.
There you go.
What's that?
But it's not enforceable by the, the, our deputies are not enforcing that, or the HOA's rules on their private streets.
So the HOA would have to enforce it and pay for tow truck themselves per se. So they're probably not going to do that.
Well, they could charge the, the people who tow it, the people who go pick up the car and pay the tow fee, so.
They'd have to put signs out, you're towing is strictly enforced or something like that.
But I mean, there are communities in our neighborhood close to the school that do have those signs. I think that feels like the path of least resistance.
Okay. I just don't want to encourage more of that into their, into their neighborhood, you know, cars lined up in their cul-de-sac and down the street and.
You can't get turned around and can't get in and out.
Yeah, and, you know, you know, and I'm not sure.
It's a proximity issue. I mean, it's because you're near the schools.
I mean, yeah, you've got the luxury of being by a school and you've got the headache.
The issues that go with it.
The traffic, I mean, but, like, we, again, I just want the kids to not get hit on Deal Road, that's it. And I don't think that, I mean, we can't go on down, how many cars are going to be there? I mean, that's a problem with every neighborhood around there.
Yep.
They're going to have to figure that out with the HOA.
Yep. So what we're looking for is just a, a, an additional condition that is directing the developer town staff and to work with Union County schools to see about placing a, an accessibility path or
Pedestrian.
pedestrian path that will, that will join the, the neighborhood to the school property.
Right.
Not, not through the neighborhood, but.
But connect the neighborhood.
Right.
Yeah. To the school property.
Correct.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
And you all, you all would agree to that condition?
Yeah, we haven't, we're not opposed to that.
Perfect, okay, then we'll just add that to the condition.
So that'd be a condition?
Yeah, so I'll make a total of three conditions in, because the planning board had two, is what I'm seeing on.
And what are the?
Oh, there's more, okay.
Can you, can you state, Greg, what the other two conditions are?
Yes, the other two conditions were to expand the 50-foot buffer, at least in the verbiage of the planning board, 10 to 15 feet, which they have more than now exceeded in meeting our current standard of 100 feet, so that condition's been met. And the second was for staff to review the landscape plan of that buffer.
Okay. And, and do we have a landscape plan for the, for the front?
We have one for the 50 feet that was provided to the planning board's packet. There's not been an updated version for this 100-foot submitted yet, and as noted, your, your previous staff report in our agenda shows 12 lots. We just got this 11-lot addition at the time of, of packet placement of the council, so some of this information is relatively new.
So, so one of the conditions has really been taken care of, so we're really only have two.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Two, and then our standard conditions on top of that that go along with it, which is, you know, we have the standard conditions that are in all conditional zones, so it's, it has to follow along.
Correct, correct, okay. Is there anything else, you know, besides those two conditions that you guys want to discuss? Tom, I see your thinking.
I think we're okay, you know. It's still subject to the receipt of the last permit. You know, one short.
Right.
Yeah, they have, they have to get that to build, so, yeah.
Right. So it'd be subject to approval of that last, well, I mean.
No, they, they can't, they can't build the house if they don't get that permit, so they, they have done us the favor of giving us these permits to date. And so, again, that what, they'll get the next one, and if they only get 10, then they only get to build 10 homes.
Okay.
But they have all but one.
Correct.
Brandon, Darcy, anything else you guys would like to add?
No.
I just, I had one quick question, because you brought up a valid point. In the event we don't get that permit for whatever reason, and I only build 10, that's, I'm reducing, I'm okay with that, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good, okay. And, and I think we would be, we'd be fine.
Okay.
Any reduction in density is, is an administrative.
Gotcha, okay.
Correct.
Perfect, just want to make sure.
Is your mic on?
It is, am I not talking loud enough?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. If there's nothing else to discuss, can I get a motion?
Well, we'll need a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, you got to do that. About to move forward too fast. So, okay, we're going to open a public hearing, so thank you. Chad, I think you're, you're down for this one? Come on up.
Good evening, Chad Emery. I live at 953 Eagle Road Aeroplanation. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, because it's, I was happy to see the 100-foot buffer. I think it'll be beneficial, especially, I've driven through there when it's, school is letting out and it's a traffic nightmare that if they ever decide to add a turn lane, I'm sure the road will probably never get widened, but then there's a buffer there to account for that. But in the letter, which I think has been partially clarified, is, there was a letter as far as the, the septic of saying lots seven through 11 had already been approved, but one through six had not been approved yet, and our UDO requires septic approval as before, before an approval of the, the development, so I just wanted to clarify that. If we're missing it per UDO, it's supposed to be turned in at this point in time. And then also just from, I know when we were at the community meeting, there was a lot of concern about already existing lights from the school that I don't know if, if the developer could look at low-impact or minimal lighting to add, you know, to where it's not adding even more light to the surrounding neighbors.
Thanks, thank you, Chad. Okay, closing public hearing.
I, I did not sign up for public comment, because I did not see any conditions that I wanted to comment on, but the additional condition you added, I do have a comment. May I be accepted for public comment?
Are we allowed to do that?
You have to reopen, but yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll reopen public comments for, or public hearing for this.
That wasn't about the.
I'm Michelle Nichols, and I live across the street from the south end of the property, and I did speak with you, Mayor Bellwin, we had our community meeting about access to the school. I've lived there for 30 years before and after the school was built. My kids attended school there. We have a kitchen that faces Deal Road. We do not have a lot of foot traffic down that road. I don't think 11 people are going to, 11 households are going to increase that foot traffic that much. And I believe those kids will create a path, if they need one, to the school. What I do see is that we already have people that turn around in our driveway, that drop their kids off and don't want to wait to go right to get out of the school, so they turn left, pull in our driveway, and then they get to go faster south. There's a policeman, well, I think it's a, I don't think it's a real policeman, excuse me, somebody that actually directs traffic there and keeps people from going 50 miles an hour down the road. We have to wait in the traffic sometimes when we pull out of our driveway. I'm very disturbed that the neighborhood would be required to put a pathway in their neighborhood that would increase the traffic coming in and out right in front of our three houses that are along there, because it is happening in the Weddington Hills neighborhood. They are one of the neighborhoods, so is Wedgewood, that have people parking there. They've had fire safety issues with people parking too far out in the road and they're in school, so they can't find them. I think it's the wrong thing to do to invite people into a common pathway that cannot be controlled by the HOA without having it monitored by a policeman. And if you want to speak with the HOA of Weddington Hills, who I know a lot of people over there, they've been through that and they posted it, and they still have people parking, because now people are renting their, and somebody's put in a circle drive to allow parking, so I wanted to address that, and I did not know that that was going to be a condition put in, but as a neighbor that's right there, I don't want more people dropping off kids there. I wanted to go through where there's patrol to get them in and out safely. And I think it could be more of a problem with kids, if they were, if they are walking down the road, we, we really don't see that much.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Enclosed public hearing. Public hearing's closed. Council, would you guys like to address any of these comments?
Jeff, you have anything? I guess, and, and I certainly appreciate, ma'am, what, what you stated, and I know, I mean, Brandon, I know you live over there in that area, so I'm, I'm going to have to defer to you two on whether we want to include, you know, based on the, the balance of this, because
I hear what they're saying.
this is a specific thing that affects people that are on that stretch of road, and
I hear what they're saying, but if, if the concern is that people are going to park there and walk over, they're going to do that with or without a pathway, so I mean, the pathway doesn't make more cars park there. If they're going to do it, they're going to do it anyway. I'm just simply trying to consider all the kids that live on that side of the middle school who walk, and I know there's a fair amount that have been using that property to cut through to get to the houses on that side, so I don't know, what's the right answer? Like, I think that there needs to be a way for the kids to walk to school if we're going to require them to walk. I don't think we can control the parking of the cars with or without a walkway. Like, not having one doesn't make them not park there.
They aren't required, required to walk to school.
Well, the buses don't come, so if they don't have parents that can take them, they're, when, yeah, when they're that close, they are required to, I mean.
They do, I live, I live across the street from the school. The bus comes into our neighborhood. The ki, I, I live in a neighborhood on Deal Road, the bus, my, my kids have ridden the bus.
So are you, like, less than, how many miles are you from the school?
Ha, half a mile, maybe.
Like, is there no parameter in which the buses don't?
No.
So they go to, they'll come to that, this neighborhood?
Yes.
Yeah, I had, we had buses come parking in our house, across the street, if I wanted, my kids can do that, but if you want them to walk.
Yes, and I mean, I would agree with her. I would say there are 50 to 60 houses in my neighborhood, and we have school-aged children and they walk to school, but more of the children that I see walking to school, our neighborhood has kind of an island in the front entrance, and the parents will whip around, and there's a kind of a natural area, I'm not, it's the, like, that field across from the middle school. It's, anyway, they will, like, kind of pull into the, off the side of the road, and the kids will get out and run across the street. I mean, that, that's a majority of the walkers. There are a handful of walkers that come from within our neighborhood for sure, but a majority of the kids that are crossing there are crossing to meet their parents in that little natural spot, I don't know, side of the road.
I just look at it at the point of, there will be children that want to walk from that neighborhood to the school and they want to get there, there as safely as possible. That's the whole point. And be it a walking path up on the front or a sidewalk or whatever it may be, just seems to be a safe way to get them there. And this parking thing is going to occur, I don't know how it's going to occur, nobody knows, we can speculate, but the proximity is going to, you know, potentially encourage some people to park in their neighborhood and walk through or whatever, but you don't know how it's going to be developed. If you have people, the, 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 the community puts up fences and stuff and there's no way to cut through, there's no way to cut through.
Yeah, I just wish we had a walking path on Providence. I mean, there's hundreds of kids that walk up and down Providence, and it is dangerous and busy and.
Yes. I mean, last, last spring, we had a group of students, from, wedding high school students, came in wanting us to build a sidewalk from the high school down to a neighborhood that's probably a half a mile, quarter a mile down, down the road, on 84, because they were walking up the side of the highway.
That's what I was trying to avoid on Deal.
So, so I get that. I just don't want to encourage more, you know, anything into the neighborhood for the residents. I think you guys get that.
It's already happening, if it's happening.
Well, whenever they get the neighborhood, you know.
It will happen probably.
Yeah.
But if there's no easy way out for them, if they have to park and then walk around, it's going to be more discouraging than, you know, you don't want a path in the back that cuts right across real easy. You want something up on the front, I would think, even though the back is the shortest way out.
So, so if you, if they're going to do it anyway, why not let, focus them down the front and into the, like, the ball field area down that way as opposed to coming straight into the neighborhood?
Yep.
Does that make sense? Would that be a?
You have to see what the school says.
Yeah, there's gates that are locked all the time around that ball field, so they'll have to talk to the school and figure it out.
Okay.
What the options are.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, if the school says no, and it's a condition, I just feel like the downside and the upside here are not not equaling out.
All we want, and hopefully what everybody wants, is for the kids to be safe, however that's managed. I don't care how fancy it is, I don't care. Like, that's. that's managed. I don't care how fancy it is, I don't care. Like, that's my only ask, just don't let kids get hit on Providence or Deal. Let's do our best to avoid that.
But can we do it as a condition with approval of the school? We get their, their blessing on it?
You could put feasibility, you could put the language in there that-
So long as the school, you know, as we get, you know, safety approval from the school, because it could be that it creates an even more unsafe condition because it's a path from nowhere to nowhere, and so it might encourage further walking on Deal Road that isn't happening right now because they're able to cut through the back and, or, or walking across school property, that the school does not believe it's safe because of the location and it's fenced off and what have you, so.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, they want the kids to be safe.
Yep.
Right, right. So, so would you say, should we narrow it down, a walking path or sidewalk? One or the other? Should it be narrowed down now? Or is that, Greg, you want to say something?
Yes, I believe the original conversation was have the applicant, the school, and staff, myself, explore a path to the neighborhood. I can't change my recommendation. I've already provided a staff report, and the planning board's already talked about this concept and decided not to go the sidewalk route, but as, as you all explained, it's, this is heavily dependent on the school. So I think the original conversation that tasked those three bodies to explore this option leaves it open-ended enough to, to try to work with all parties.
You have the flexibility, you know.
Okay, and you, and you can determine sidewalk versus walking path if the school gives their blessings and says, we want it. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. My personal opinion is that it should be on the street, should be along the, the pathway, but again, that's going to be heavily dependent on the school, where they see a safe route.
Okay. Karen, I see you about to say something?
I just want to make sure I understand for the wording, that it's exploring the possibility of a path, whether it be-
It's not requiring, it's just-
It's not requiring, okay.
Right, with the school's approval, and, you know, they're, like I said earlier, they're, they're blessing on it.
We said the sidewalk or path based on what the school-
Recommendations would be.
And Greg figure out, it's going to be high secret.
And you got the other condition-
I know, well, you can make money on that 11th lot.
Pardon me?
I thought long.
Okay, there's, there's, there's really just, just two conditions.
You got a market lot?
Okay.
Several tiers, layers, layers, layers.
We're going to make you build a high-rise apartment deck in there for students to walk to the high school.
That would be amazing.
And as far as septic, the question was from Chad, septic, that's already been, you got the letter, all except that one lot.
Correct.
Yeah, all the permits are, all except that one, and if you don't get the permit, that house won't be built. And, and, and I think that's, I think that's good, and they're, and they're all panel block, anyway. Correct?
Okay.
And as far as the, the, the lighting and that kind of thing, you've got a buffer, I think that was brought up in a comment or a question, the, the light spill from the school or from the neighborhood, that kind of thing. I think you, you guys have a buffer any, in there anyway, on, on the side of the school, a 50-foot buffer, correct?
Already got a buffer on that side.
Yes, yeah. Okay, is there any, any other questions or concerns from counsel?
Nope.
Okay, can I get a, a motion?
What, I'd like to have Karen read the conditions. Like, we've got the two, but I, just so they can, so we can go through it and get their approval here on the, on the mic before, before y'all vote, so.
Okay, just make sure you guys are good with the-
Yeah, not just, yes, yes, yes.
So I'm reading in the development standards for the conditional zoning 202501 Elation Development. The development of the property will be governed by these development standards. All submittals presented to the town board in support of this application and the applicable provisions of the Town of Weddington Unified Development Ordinance in place on the filing date. The rezoning plan shall comply with the current version of the Applicable Non-Unified Development Ordinance at the time of individual permit submission unless otherwise specified under state or federal law, including NCGS 160D-108 Permit Choice and vested rights. Examples of these codes may include, but are not limited to, building codes, fire codes, and/or codes or regulations administered by outside agencies. The schematic nature of the rezoning plan. The rezoning plan shows the general location of all structures and exact locations of structures may be altered or modified during design, engineering, and construction phases of the development, so long as the minimum ordinance standards are met, and such alterations and modify, or modifications are materially in keeping with the rezoning plan. Permitted uses. Permitted uses for this site include all uses permitted in the RCD and R40 districts. This site may be developed with up to, and I did write this before it changed, but up to 12 single-family residential units. Environmental features and open space. The site shall comply with the minimum open space and tree save requirements as set forth in D 917A, P, and Q of the Weddington Unified Development Ordinance. Stormwater management. Applicants shall meet all requirements for stormwater management as required by the Weddington United, Unified Development Ordinance and as required by town engineers. Access and transportation. All roadway improvements and construction within the subdivision will be subject to the standards and criteria of the Town of Weddington and/or the NCDOT standards for road construction, and applicants shall only be required to provide one ingress, egress from Deal Road to the subdivision. Streetscape setbacks, buffers, and yards. Where the side or rear yards of lots may be oriented toward existing thoroughfare roads a buffer of at least 100 feet wide of existing woodland, providing adequate visual screening throughout the year is required. And is that how I'm leaving that one?
Is that, is that what you all-
One question I have, Karen.
Can I?
They dropped it from 12 to 11.
Right, let me, can I finish?
Okay.
Okay. And the staff is to review the buffer landscape plan in that buffer. A 50-foot buffer shall be provided between homes in the subdivision and any non-residential use. Within the 50-foot buffers where natural landscape does not provide sufficient screening for adjoining existing homes in a long Deal Road frontage per section D 917A O of the Unified Development Ordinance, applicant will, will enhance those areas of the buffer with evergreen planning, such as Nellie Stevens, Burford Holly, Ligustrum, or similarly approved evergreen species. A minimum 50-foot front yard, 15-foot side yard, and 25-foot corner side yard, and 40-foot rear yard setbacks shall be provided. Street trees shall be provided on each side of the streets, spaced 40 feet on center or based on tree species in compliance with section D 917A Q1B. An applicant will work with state, with staff, and Union County Schools to explore a pedestrian path connecting the property to the school.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the developer has agreed to those conditions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, okay, can I get a motion for approval or denial?
I still have the question, because the original thing was for 12, and they dropped it to 11, but we reference 12 here.
It says up to, I said up to 12, and I can change it to say 11. Yeah.
It just should say 11, I would think, because that's what they're now applying for.
That's fine.
Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion. Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
For the home, for Keystone Homes, for conditional zoning approval for development of an 11-lot subdivision on Deal Road parcel 06099010.
It's your motion for approval. Can I, uh-
Are we supposed to say as stated?
Yeah, with the conditions as stated by-
With the conditions as stated by staff, town staff.
Okay, can I get a, all in favor with her?
Aye.
Aye, okay. It passes unanimously?
Then we need a motion for this, to approve the statement of reasonableness and consistency as presented in the package.
Okay, can you get a motion for?
I make a motion to approve the statements of reasonableness and consistency as stated in the package.
Thank you.
I'm going to have you read the whole thing.
Yes, can I get a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, okay. Is there any other motions we need to approve?
Just those two.
Thank you. Welcome to Weddington.
They're like-
So, we're good. Thank you, guys. Okay. All right, we'll move forward. Item C is the text amendment 202501 to Town of Weddington Unified Development Ordinance. Section D 917, our tree ordinance, tree requirements. We're going to open up a public hearing at this point for this, and then we want to have discussion. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone signed up for this? Debbie, I guess not. Is it the same as this one here, or a different sheet, or is it stapled? It's just this one. And I saw Chad raise his hand back there. I, I only got this one. Oh, it's, it's, it's here. Okay, all right, cool, thank you. Chad, come on up.
Good evening, Chad Emery, Aero Plantation. I just wanted to mention something as far as I'm in favor of the new tree ordinance, but I just wanted to clarify one thing of where I saw a disconnect between what we have for RCD versus this that I think could be clarified and make it simpler in the process. We were, in the new process, or the new ordinance it would have in part B, it says a tree inventory, which locates all the existing trees based off the diameter, which then leads to the requirements of the new tree ordinance. In part 2B, it says, "The tree canopy shall be preserved in order to stabilize soil, control water pollution, prevent soil erosion, reducing flooding, reduce air pollution, and noise pollution, provide natural habitat for wildlife," but it doesn't really clarify it versus in forest lands for, in the RCD, it says, "An evaluation is required that has criteria that, and not only do you inventory the trees, but you have the present conditions and what their functions are, of whether the, any part of the tree canopy is used for protecting steep slopes, erodible soils, maintaining the stream quality, and providing for wildlife habitats." So my suggestion would be to just put what's in forest lands, part two of the evaluation criteria in with the tree, where it says the tree inventory requirement. So that way, it syncs up if a developer decides they were going to do R40, they flip to RCD, that since somebody's already inventorying the trees, then they can have the notes as far as if there's any part of that tree canopy that has a specific function, because when you get to part 2B, it's saying the tree canopy needs to do those functions. So, without having that verbiage of saying, hey, you need to have that evaluation in there as part of the steps, it could avoid some confusion, and then it ensures that our tree canopy and our tree ordinance reflects all of those, because those factors could impact the potential layout of lots on, on a neighborhood that you want to make sure, not only are we protecting or have a mitigation effort for heritage trees and things like that, but also evaluating, hey, do any part of these trees prevent soil erosion, prevent the stream buffers, prevent wildlife, anything like that. So it's just a suggestion to clarify that, add that statement into part B of the tree inventory.
So you're saying, take the, take this for the R40, into the, RCD into the R40?
Right, so that way, yeah, so that way it's synced up for both, whether a developer, if they don't even know at that point in time which way they're going to go, they would have done that step.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense.
I think so. You guys understand?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chad. Public hearing is closed. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Chad. Before we get into this, I just want to say thank you to the sub, subcommittee headed up by Bill Dieter, along with Rusty Seltzer and Chris Falk, for, you know, working on this. I know Bill worked really hard, along with, with Greg and our staff. I want to say thank you, Greg, for, for this, because when I first, we first started talking about this, and this has been on my radar for quite a while, and I, and I want to say thank you for, to Deal, to Toll Brothers, for what they did at Luna, for encouraging us to get this done faster, because that was, I think, a travesty down there, what happened down there. So, thank you, Toll Brothers, for, you know, encouraging us to get this done faster. But, but on a serious note, I know Bill worked a lot of hours on this, along with Dr. Keith O'Hara, the urban, Union County Urban Forester. The county put a lot of work into it, a lot of input into it. We use stuff from Charlotte and other towns. I, I think this is tight. I think we have a good tree ordinance. I, the guys did an awesome job. The planning board headed up by Travis Manning even had a special session to talk about just this, along with our staff. So, a lot of work was put into this, a lot of thought and effort. So, again, to the subcommittee and to the staff and to the planning board, thank you for all you did. So, so now I want to open it up to, to the staff, I mean, to the, the board here to talk about, and I have a few items too, but guys, anybody want to go first?
I'll go first. I want to echo the thanks, Bill, to you and your team, and to everybody that's put the input. And Chad, thank you for bringing this other item to our attention. I came in early today to talk to some of the other folks, and I think that needs to be included because it makes sense.
Does.
It's, it's logical, it, it would work, and the only, that's, so that's the only comment I've got. It's the only thing I would ask is that we incorporate that, this section two in the, that we were talking about, that Chad mentioned, into the document. And I don't know if it's just a matter of just saying, we'll approve it and directing staff to incorporate-
Right.
-that as well, but I'm good with it. I think, I think we've needed it, and it's, it's about time.
No, so that, that will be one of our, our, our things, too.
No, I think this, we, this has come a long way and solves a lot of problems that we have had in the past and still experiencing. And-
Right.
They've done great work here.
Uh, I have a couple of things, but Brandon and Darcy, you guys want to chime in for I saying something?
No, I agree with everyone. I've emailed back and forth with Chad to get clarity on, and I think that's a good addition and a good catch, and thanks. I know how much time you guys have put on this and the subcommittee, and, and they, our resources with Keith O'Hara have been very helpful, so it's due time.
Mm-hmm. Brandon?
Sure, I just want to express my gratitude to the folks that did the groundwork on this, and as Jeff said, I'm good with it.
Okay, okay. I have a couple of things I think I'd like for us to talk about.
Let me just say one thing, and it really applies sort of this, but really to the subcommittee. You've done this part here, which is fabulous, and we need to finish it up with the mass grading component that has to be updated to, to marry these two together to prevent what has happened in some places.
And that's-
Because our mass grading rules are weak, weaker than war, to say the least.
And that's next on their list. They had, they had those three, three items. Another item we'll discuss later. Two things I, I'd like for us to talk about, along with what Jeff said earlier, page 46 of UDOQ dot one, it says, uh, well- Let's go right here in front of me. It says here, as part of the, the tree requirements, "To establish standards for identification, documentation, preservation of significant trees and vegetation during development, development process, ensuring ecological integrity, community aesthetics, and compliance with the UDO." I had no problem with that. My problem is its next sentence. "The tree survey must be prepared and certified by qualified arborist, landscaped architect, or land surveyor." I feel like this statement here, this sentence here, is letting the fox guard the hen house. A developer could say, you know, anybody on his staff, if he's a qualified arborist or a landscaped architect, go out there and, you know-
Tell me what you got.
Tell me what you got, and this is what I really want you to do, that kind of thing. My suggestion would be, take that sentence out and make it, make it be the, because we still need to take, have control of this. We've given the control away with that sentence. It needs to be the Union County Urban Forester, who we have on, I say, quote, in staff-
We pay.
-we pay, anyway. That person needs to be in charge of determining, not the developers' people to, to do that. So, I highly feel that we need to make it the Union County Urban Forester instead of the developers on- make it the Union County Urban Forester instead of the developers' own people to do that.
Another suggestion, maybe, maybe we have the urban forester review, because that is a, this is a, surveyors generally are the ones who are doing these, it's the task here to cut the trees and what have you, and so it would be, I would recommend that we let the developer pay that really expensive fee to get that project done, and then before we move forward with it, it's reviewed by the Union County Urban Forester on our behalf.
I guess the question then is, if they don't do a good job and they miss things, who's responsible?
They have to go back and do it again.
Because once things, I mean, is the urban forester going to go out and then do his general survey?
Yeah, they would, he would review it for accuracy and for completeness.
That's what you're saying. That's fine.
And if, and if the urban forester rejects it, then they have to go back and do it again.
Because I know we don't have the staff or the time to do it, so it'd be the urban forester that.
We would be asking, yeah, that's what we would be asking for. I mean, I'd like, you know, that town of Davidson has an on staff, they pay a staff opus.
Do we need to include the wording that the urban forester somehow or another will confirm this?
Yeah, for review by the, for review and approval by the urban forester.
Union County Urban Forester.
For review and approval by the urban.
Yes, sir.
Or by the town, and then the town, we can do it that way, by the, and we either engage the appropriate person, or the urban forester does it, depending on the circumstances. That gives us more flexibility.
We are engaging somebody else later on.
Okay, because I just don't want to give, that sentence as it stands gives, you know where I'm at with this.
It's a good catch, and we just got to get the wording, proper wording changed.
That review has to be there at the developer's expense.
So staff, do you have that as stated, or know the intent of the comment? Page 46, Q dot one. It's like the second to last sentence in there.
In the, do you have more?
I do. I have one other thing. How did you phrase that?
No, by a qualified, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, reviewed, yeah. The tree survey must be prepared and certified by a qualified arborist, landscaped architect, or land surveyor, and approved by the town, and then we can take.
In the town, we would engage the Union County Urban Forester to go out and verify it.
Yeah, or even one of our own engineers who has that.
Regimen, need to find somebody else.
Okay.
That's why, like, that's why I prefer it be just the town.
So we're covered? Okay. I have one, okay, so I'm going to move on then. One other thing I feel like we need to take out is on page 51, it's 11F. It talks about having a cap, a cap of $25,000. Really, you know, when you're talking about, we were talking with a developer earlier, two, three, four, and five million dollar homes, $25,000, that's a nice set of kitchen cabinets, or some amenities in the back, in the backyard. So I feel like that cap needs to be taken off. There doesn't need, we're, that's only a 31-inch tree, basically, 31.25-inch tree for that $25,000 cap, at $800 an inch. So that needs to be taken out. So there is no cap to it.
So legal on that, there is recent, relatively recent law about, these are, it says code enforcement penalties, and there has been some cases, not in North Carolina, they haven't made it to the court here, but there's one in Florida in particular, where a court has determined that kind of, I'm going to call it an egregious dollar amount of a code enforcement violation is a violation of the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution for unusual, you know, the punishment doesn't meet the crime, is what they're finding. And so that is probably why there are numbers in there. I do recommend, if it's 25 is not the number, I do recommend that you all decide on a cap, so that we, so that we have a justifiable penalty.
What is, so my, one of my questions was, are we at the high end of legal and customary on all of it across the board?
You're, this penalty end. Now, don't get me wrong, there are cities who have, who have issued huge fines, they do not get paid. And they, and they have a mitigation policy where they mitigate that dollar amount by having extra trees planted, by having some work done, that kind of thing. So they mitigate the high level of those penalties because they are suspectly legal or not legal.
Don't get me wrong, but didn't, wasn't, didn't Davidson have like a 50 or 75, $1,000 tree fine?
They did, and they did not collect. So they don't collect those fines.
Okay. All right, so, so what if we, if we need a cap, what if we double the cap?
Yeah, that, that's, again, we're pushing the limit, but it doesn't make any difference, you know. As long as there is one, then I feel like we have, the open-endedness of it is what can be bad, because it can get up to very high numbers. But if we have a cap, I feel like we are at least becoming more constitutionally appropriate.
What is your goal to, by increasing the cap?
To cut down a big heritage.
Oh, I was wondering what Jim's goal was.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the goal is, is to, again, as inflation goes up, as we have higher-end homes here, $25,000 is not, I had, I had a broker, real estate broker, tell me, a few weeks ago, I just ran it by someone in the business. I said, what do you think about having a cap? They said, a developer will just build it in. Instead of being 1.5, it'd be 1.525, or 25,000.
They'll just build, build the cost of the fee into what they're charging and just pay the 25,000 and be done with it.
And just cut, you cut the trees on, keep moving, and the residents pay for that tree, basically, because they, they built it into the, to the price of the home.
But if we're not collecting?
No, we will collect.
You could. So, yeah, but there's a, there's a level that it's unconstitutional. So that's, that's, that's as a civil penalty. So I don't know what that level is, but I just, if we have a cap on that number, we have a better defense.
Chat GPT says 50,000.
Oh, my gosh.
Is the high end of normal and customary.
Yeah. I would, I'd be comfortable with 50,000 doubling that.
Not to exceed 50, you know.
And again, as long as we have a cap on it, I feel like we have a defensible ordinance.
Okay, so that would cover a lot more trees than what we're looking for and what we're, what we're doing here.
Counsel, if I may, this is, just note that this is 25,000 per tree.
Per tree.
So if you do 50,000 per tree, and they cut down 50 trees.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. That's going to discourage everybody.
You can cut down 50, 60-inch trees to get there.
Right.
But that's the whole point of this, is to discourage.
Yes.
This behavior.
Exactly. So we, we're trying to discourage it. And so way it stood, it wasn't a discouragement. As time goes on, I feel like we would have to be redoing this thing, because that's just not.
Well, then let's, let's go ahead and add it, or bump it up to not to exceed 50,000.
Okay. Okay, and I think we're all, we're all in favor of that.
Yep.
Okay, I have one last thing, and I'll let you speak.
That was it.
I just want to say, okay, thank you, Darcy. I want to say thank you, Greg, because I think originally it got left out of the N.C. North Carolina General Statute 160D 921. That, just for the record, if a developer goes in, and correct me if I'm wrong, and that's general statute already, if a developer goes in and says, oh, I didn't know, you know, I, I cut them all down and I didn't know, then in that process, the town can pull the, pull his permits for three years, and shut him down for three years. If he says, heck with it, I'm going to do it anyway, and he intentionally goes in and just clear cuts and cuts them down, then town can pull the permits for five years, shut him down, you know, for five years. And I'm going to say too, along with the fines that go with it, and we can cut him, you know, shut him down for five years. So I think it's a strict, strict ordinance, and, and I want us to enforce it and, and and be strict with it. But again, go back to what you said, Greg, it is per tree, the 50,000 is per tree, not per lot or for whatever, it's per tree. And so those are, those are the big big questions I have. And this, I just, in my concern too, and I think we gave it some thought, this doesn't affect negatively home residents who want to go in their backyard and cut a tree down, you know, don't, it doesn't affect them negatively. This is for the intent that it's, that it's applied to here. So that's not an intent to harm or damage or restrict residents as they are today, you know, Weddington residents, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments or suggestions or, you know, ideas about this?
They've done a good job.
No, and again, I'll say, Bill, you guys, planning board, everybody did an awesome job on this. Staff, do you have any questions about what we, you know, what we're, the changes that we made? Okay, okay, we're good. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion we approve as amended, and I don't know all the exact amendments, but she's got them.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. We'll move on to text amendment 2025 dash two of the UDO Section D 917A dot J is cul-de-sacs. Public hearing is open. I don't think we have any comments, Debbie, from the, from this, so.
You had a comment in writing to us.
Yes.
Okay.
That probably ought to be read.
Okay.
I usually incorporate those into the minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Did she request that it be read in her email? I don't remember.
Said she couldn't be here. I'm not sure it has to be read or not. You're.
It was just a written public comment, is what she asked.
It needs to be on record, but that can be in a written format.
Okay. I am looking forward.
Do we need to read it or not?
We don't need to read it, okay.
Just say it's going to be entered in the record.
Okay, it'll be entered into the record, okay? And I can't find it unless somebody finds it before I do.
I have, you want the email?
I'm not, we're not going to read it, we're just.
Yeah, make sure Karen has it.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Public comments are, public hearing is closed, as I said.
It was from Janice Salute, right?
Okay, all right, we'll enter that. I'm going to open this up for discussion. The, the cul-de-sac amendment is right now, right now, our cul-de-sac lengths are up to 1,200 linear feet for a cul-de-sac. We felt for safety sake, that was a little, little long, and so we asked the, again, the subcommittee, along with staff and Greg, to look at this. They did a lot of research. And so there was several areas of change they did to cul-de-sacs here. One is shortening that cul-de-sac length down to 500 feet, 500 feet, and also I think a lot of times in a, and I sort of understand this, in a cul-de-sac, the residents feel like, okay, you know, there'll be no through traffic, but if, but for safety of neighboring, I'll say subdivisions, if there's a development that butts up to that one, then for safety and sake for emergency vehicles, you know, fire and police, that kind of thing, there needs to be a, I call it a cut through, an adjoining street there. And so and so we, we do enforce that. The ordinance wanted also to put a sign there, just to let residents know of that if an adjacent parcel opens up or a development opens up, then there would be, you know, that, that would, that would open up that. So the ordinance was adding that, a sign required at the end of the cul-de-sac or dead-end street. Also, there was a, also a change, no system of multiple branching cul-de-sacs for a single junction within a connected street network is permitted. And of course, these are cul-de-sacs and streets of private, private streets. So those, that is the the change for cul-de-sacs. I want to open it up for counsel to discuss any concerns, thoughts, or ideas on this.
I think it, as the lady that submitted the letter to us stated, we've got to make sure that, and I believe the suggestion was made, was discussing that with Chief McLendon, making sure that any responding emergency vehicles, be it a fire truck, you know, ambulance, whoever, has got room to turn around down there.
And we're going to cover that.
And that's, you know, to me, that's the safety issue of it, and then reducing the length of them are the two main things. And I believe a lot of that has been covered in the language that we've got, so.
Right.
That's where I'm at with it.
Okay.
Based on the conversations I've had, it seems to be in line with best practices, and that is reasonable.
Okay, Darcy?
Yeah, the, the concerns that we had have been mitigated. So I think we, I think they did a good job, and I'm ready to go on with it.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to?
I make a motion to approve the new text amendment to the UDO Section D 19A J cul-de-sacs as presented.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Staff, you clear on everything? Karen?
Yeah, yes, we're good.
We're good? Okay, are you guys good? Okay.
We do, we will need some consistency, a consistency statement. So if we could just have a motion to approve, or to approve the, the.
The statement of consistency.
Yes. Motion to approve the statement that the tree ordinance is consistent with the town of Weddington's planning documents, and that's, that's plenty.
Okay, so moving back to the tree ordinance. Okay, can I get a?
I'll make a motion that we, the statement of consistency is.
Consistent with the town of, town of Weddington's planning documents, yep.
Okay. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. We don't need to do that for the cul-de-sacs? We do, okay.
Same one.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we are in, we are consistent with the UDO and the land use plan in reference to the text changes for ordinance Section D 19A J cul-de-sacs.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Thank you. Okay, we're good to move on to item E. Item E is a text amendment 2025 dash O three of the UDO Section D 917A dot I, Street Design and Standards. I'm going to open this up for public hearing. Public hearing's open. I don't think we have anybody signed up. Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay? Just to open this up for you guys. Back several months ago, I talked with Chief McLendon, as well as the bill of the chairman of the subcommittee. And to get an idea, just to let the residents know, myself, along with the council, we are, we're sort of, we're dogmatic on the safety of our residents, and we want the best, you know, for our, for our residents and, and health, safety and well-being of the town. And that's why, you know, we have a big concern for that. Back when I was talking with Chief McLendon, his concern was some of the, some of the streets, now, this pertains to private streets. Now, if it's DOT-owned, whatever, we really don't have a dog in that fight, because DOT is their streets. So, but, but any gated community, any private streets, that kind of thing, this is where this falls. of thing, this is where this falls. Chief McLendon's problem was, if